Just for your information, we're starting a little late. We just finished our study meeting. Due to some legal requirements, council meeting will start immediately after this next meeting. But this one is usually pretty short. Our -- I have to -- the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency, usually we have it right after this.
That's right. We'll have our Redevelopment Agency meeting, and it'll take a few minutes. And so if you're here for the public comment period and our regular city council meeting, that'll be a few minutes later. Welcome to our Redevelopment Agency special meeting. I call to order the meeting. Note that all of our members are present except for Mr. Christensen and Mr. Fertissimah. I have the opportunity to do an opening ceremony, so will everyone please join with me to recite the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Suppose I've already done the roll call. Now we have a public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comment concerning the proposed community reinvestment project area plan and budget, whether the agency should revise, approve, or reject the proposed community reinvestment project area plan and budget, and to receive all written and oral objections to the proposed community reinvestment project area plan and budget. This hearing is a combined plan and budget hearing, so any comments or objections to the plan or budget should be made in this hearing, as there will not be a separate hearing later in the agenda. Mr. Pyle, anything else we need to say before we open the public comment period?
Yes, sir. Actually, two things. One, which does not need to be taken care of in the public comment portion, but later on, and then one is just a question. So we brought Mr. Springmeyer here this evening in the event that the RDA board would like to hear some background and project information on the proposed CRA. The board itself and staff, of course, have heard information on the site many times in preceding months and over even, I think, a couple of years, actually. So I did not think you necessarily would want that for yourself, but you may want that in terms of any public that might be interested here this evening. So if that would be the pleasure of the board, we get Mr. Springmeyer do a preliminary presentation of short duration before we move on.
All right. So yes, we'd like to do that, and bring the map down, please.
All right. Our map operator has vacated their room for the moment, so we're going to see if Eric can do this.
Okay. John Springmeyer, Redevelopment Agency. For your consideration tonight is the proposed Fairborn -- excuse me, the Fairborn Community Reinvestment Area, Fairborn CRA. Getting the redevelopment language wrong myself. Little background on the terms of the project as proposed. This is a CRA. That is the new language that we're using in the state of Utah. Acreage 34.41 total acres. We're proposing a 20-year term, 25% pass-through to all taxing entities, 2.5% administrative fee to the Redevelopment Agency, and the CRAs now have a 10% mandatory housing set Little bit of background history, and again, I know the board is familiar with this, but I'll give some in case any of the people behind me would like some of that information. This was the catalyst for this redevelopment, for the CRA, is the Granger Shopping Center was built in 1990. This is where the former site of the Staples and the Toys R Us. Obviously, Staples, Toys R Us, as franchises as well as locally have had their challenges, which is why we took it upon ourselves at your request to acquire and move towards redeveloping those properties.
Pardon me, John?
Yes, sir.
Which files the map?
The map is -- map is probably the first slide on the presentation that I sent Jake last week. Or I can plug in the iPad, and it's on there, too.
I think he just left the flash drive.
Okay, good. The proposed new development will include -- this is intended to be our central business district or downtown for West Valley City. It will include when it's completed roughly 325,000 square feet of Class A office space. This is important for a variety of reasons, but specifically, we in West Valley City do not have for-lease Class A office space right now. We have owner-occupied Class A office space. We've got some very fine Class A office space, but not any for-lease product. That isn't something when our office gets inquiries that we can address. We'll be able to -- we now will be able to handle those requests. The structured parking garage, the new police headquarters, financial institutions, as well as some other future developments. The CRA will total over $152 million of private investment. The public investment, meaning all those from the contributing taxing entities, will total about $28 million. Of that, Granite School District has the largest share, is the largest recipient of tax dollars, property tax dollars. Their portion would be roughly $12 million. This is over a 20-year period. So $12 million from the school district, West Valley City is about $8 million, and Salt Lake County $6 million is the three largest participants. We -- the taxable value for the project area right now is just under $31 million. We anticipate that to be well over $150 million at the conclusion of this project area. The uses for that tax increment will be for the public parking, publicly-owned parking structure, some utility upgrades, roadway improvements, bonds, and some developer incentive as well. We have the map now up in front of you. If there are any questions that I can answer while we're addressing, if not, I can -- as questions come up, if they come up during the public comment period, I could address those as well, so.
I got one format question for Mr. Springmeyer, which is, as you look at the agenda this evening, you see that we've got a number of resolutions to adopt, whereas in the past we wouldn't have had that many. Could you give us a short explanation of why that is?
Sure. Yes, thank you. Thank you. With the change in the state law in 2016, when we adopted the CRAs, these are done now through inter-local agreement. Prior with the redevelopment, when we had RDAs or when we had URAs and EDAs, we did those through a taxing entity committee, where each of the taxing entities, the school district, the county, the city, and all of the special service districts, made up an eight-member committee that voted and took a supermajority to approve the plan and budget. We no longer have that system. What we have now is a system of interlocal agreements, where the Redevelopment Agency would enter into an agreement with Salt Lake County, with Granite School District, with Granger Hunter, with each and every one of the taxing entities in this project area. So that makes up the bulk of the items of the resolution that you've got that we wouldn't have had to do before. Three years ago, we would have been authorizing the representatives of the taxing entity committee to vote, you know, but now we've got to approve each and every one of those taxing entities or those interlocal agreements. So we have six interlocal agreements, all of which have been signed by the other participating entity. Those are all approved and all signed, ready for you. The other agreements are two resolutions from the RDA side, one to approve the project area plan, one to approve the budget, and then as a city, later in the city meeting, you'll have the same, the mirror resolutions as well for the project area plan and the project area budget. We will also be doing an interlocal agreement with -- the Redevelopment Agency will have to enter into an interlocal agreement with the city, so you will have both sides of that to wrestle with this evening. Did that cover it, Mr. Pyle?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I will sit down. Thank you. All right. Anything else, Mr. Pyle, before we open the public hearing?
Yes, and I'm not sure if we absolutely need to do this right now, but we might as well, just so everybody's aware of it. So we do have one member of the board that has property interest within the CRA. I almost keep calling it the RDA as well, myself. And it's appropriate for that board member to declare that or disclose that he has that interest. He has provided the appropriate paperwork and information, and that's in front of you all as board members, so that part of the requirement has been fulfilled. It probably would be a good timing for that statement and disclosure to be made as well before the public comment.
Thank you. That makes sense. We all have that form in front of us. Mr. Hune, if you go ahead.
Thank you. I'm the Chair, Mark Bell. Here, I own 50% interest in the Broad Corner LLC, along with my partner, Oak Main. Broad Corner LLC owns two properties located in the CRA area. The addresses are 2898 West, 3500 South, and 2878 West, 3500 South, because of the potential conflict here, so I'm going to rescue myself from any votes on the CRA tonight. Also, I want to excuse tonight with other reasons, so I have to take off right now. Is it okay with me?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Hune. All right. With that information, we'll proceed with the public hearing. And we now open the public hearing. If there's anyone here to make comments or speak to us about this community reinvestment project area, this is the appropriate time. Please step forward and give us your name and address and the information you'd like to share. Is there anyone who would like to speak to us about this issue?
I have a question.
Please come forward to the microphone.
That's okay. I can just sit here.
We have an audio record here, and if there's any discourse, we need to have that recorded through the microphone, please. Thank you for helping us.
Neil Peterson. I'm a co-owner of the Arby's on 32 and 35th. Now, what are you doing? I mean, I hate to be stupid, but I guess somebody's got to ask the question. What are you doing? The Arby's is in this area. What are we looking at with the Arby's there?
That's a great question. Thank you.
I just, like I say, I don't understand a lot of the lingo, but when I see the Arby's circled, I like to know exactly what you're going to do to that property, if anything.
That's a great question. Mr. Pyle, would you please answer his question?
Yes, and if the board is okay with this, normally we probably would answer his questions after as well, you know, when we had a lot of comment. But answering that question now for this particular property might help some of the other questions that may be of a similar nature. So with that, I'd actually like Mr. Springmeyer to come up and talk specifically about some of the projects we're looking at and specifically how it would affect that particular property.
Sure. I can tell you that -- I can tell you, we have no plans for any -- for the Arby's or for any other acquisition of any of the current existing businesses other than what has been -- what's already been acquired and demolished in the Staples and the Toys R Us and others. Our goal in this is to -- is to help these businesses. The businesses like the Arby's, the businesses like some of the new construction, you know, the new Zion, some of the things, some of the new life we're getting on 3500 South, that's our goal out of this. So by bringing in and sharing, you know, utilizing some of this tax increment for public infrastructure, for bringing in those new developments, for raising that tide, the goal is to assist all of those businesses. But no, there's no intention, there's no plan for that, and I should point out that this particular brand of CRA that we are proposing does not have the power of eminent domain like other redevelopment agency project areas do. So this is -- there's no concern with any eminent domain or any condemnation or anything. That is not a power that we have nor we have any desire for that, so.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
John, maybe you could also just give a little background of why that particular property or other ones that aren't involved are even on the map, why they --
Sure. And the reason we, when we draw these project areas, state law requires that money generated within a project area must be spent within a project area, or that the board should -- would determine to be a direct benefit to that project area. So when we're drawing these areas, we're looking at both areas that we think are going to be future generators of an increase in that property tax. Obviously, you know, the current Fairborn City Center project is the driver of that. But we also look at what areas might be recipients, where there might be a need to spend some of those monies. So when we border down, you know, when we run that line, you know, that project area map boundaries down 3500 South, you know, that's in anticipation of potential future spending. We don't want to limit ourselves for, you know, future opportunities or future need based on drawing a map that is restrictive.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the comment and answers to those questions. Any other comments from the public on this issue? Then we will close the public hearing and turn to the board for any comments or questions.
I'd like to make a comment, Mr. Chair. And I'm willing to be corrected if I'm wrong, but this, as well as other projects that we've done, this is to incentivize and facilitate investment in this area. So how it would affect your particular property, if somebody may want to buy it, but that would be up to you. You would decide if you wanted to sell it, it might increase the value of your property if somebody came in and wanted to put up something new there. But we're just creating an area where it can be redeveloped, it's more attractive to investors, and as far as your private property rights, those are still yours, and you will be able to negotiate those deals or perhaps take advantage of some incentives that we may be able to provide to you to redevelop or add something new or do something different. This is part of our ongoing effort to create vibrancy and investment within our downtown West Valley area.
Thank you, Mr. Beeler. I just want to add that we appreciate you as a business owner, and we hope that the things that we're doing here will make your business thrive even more. I particularly appreciate the Arby's as a down-mat corner, as a business.
There's nothing like a good beef and cheddar.
Mr. Bigelow?
If I might make a comment as well, and Mr. Pyle can make sure that I'm making the statements correctly, but I'm speaking more to now the citizens. What is the advantage to the people of West Valley if, when new businesses come in, property values rise, a new building goes up, and all of that tax does not come back to the city? Well, it all comes back, but part of it is credited back for other projects, because in reality, the greater property value over the long term will benefit the city by increased revenues. So we take a fixed period of time and say a portion of those funds will go back, be reinvested for infrastructure, utility upgrades, and the like. So the school district is willing to do that because, in the long run, it's beneficial to them because it raises the whole property value of that particular piece of ground where a new business comes in and locates. And the reason they come in and locate is because they know that they will have a nice location with proper infrastructure, et cetera. So it's a case of, in the long term, a win-win. Businesses want to do it because they're able to get quality, location, and infrastructure. The citizens benefit, but in the long run, because of a greater tax base and more revenues for the city. Now, did I state that fairly?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's more in layman's terms, so it's -- that's why we do these, because it's a benefit to both.
If I could add to your comments, that it's -- the benefit for our residents is not just more revenue for our city, but also a better place to live. It's more inviting for us to have a thriving business community there that will improve our quality of life in general. So that's our hope and our purposes in this -- I got to get it right -- community reinvestment project area plan. All right. To the board, then. We have some resolutions. Oh, I guess we better introduce these. Mr. Pyle, would you mind telling us more about these several resolutions? We can probably save the introduction with one big introduction.
Yes, sir. In fact, I think what I'd do, if it's okay with you, is I'll introduce the first two items separately, and then the rest of them, which are all interlocal agreements. I don't think they need any more introduction other than to say who the entity is.
Sounds great.
We can do that at an individual level. So the first resolution would be for approval of adopting the actual project area plan for the Fairborn Community Reinvestment Area. Again, it just has been as sort of described, and the purposes, the intents, what we've already done, that sort of thing. This step is necessary in accordance with the state law, just in order to actually create the area plan.
Thank you. Then to the board for action or comments.
Mr. Chair, move for approval of Resolution 18-11.
Second.
Any other discussion? We'll turn to our secretary, then, for the roll call vote.
Ms. Bling?
Yes.
Mr. Beeler?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
And Chairman Norbell?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Pyle, Resolution 18-12.
Thank you, sir. So this resolution adopts a project area budget for the plan that was just approved and adopted in the last action, and this contemplates the number of years in which the plan will be in existence. It plans for a projected, this is not for sure, but projected budget in terms of how much tax will be incremented, or I'm sorry, produced that is new, increment above and beyond what the original or today's set tax receipts and tax valuations are for those properties, and basically just gives an idea of what the financial picture of that CRA, Community Reinvestment Area, will look like over the life of the plan.
Thank you. And to our board?
I would move for approval of Resolution 18-12.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or comment? All right. To our secretary for the vote.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Beeler?
Aye.
Ms. Bling?
Yes.
And Chairman Norbell?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Mr. Pyle, then, the next one, 18-13?
Yes, sir. So this is the interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County that Mr. Springmeyer spoke of, and again, this is -- each of the remaining sets are a replacement of the old process with the taxing entity committee or tech committee. Also, as Mr. Springmeyer noted, and I think it might be worthwhile to repeat, all of the other entities have already approved their side of this interlocal agreement, so assuming that the board adopts them, that will be the final form.
All right. To the board?
I would move for approval of Resolution 18-13.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right. We'll have our vote now.
Ms. Bling?
Yes.
Mr. Beeler?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
And Chairman Norbell?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The rest of these resolutions are really the same thing that Mr. Pyle talked about, but just with a different taxing entity. And the next one is interesting. It's actually with the West Valley City. So our Redevelopment Agency, which is the board that's convening now, has to make an agreement with the city organization, and that's what this resolution is about. Anything else, Mr. Pyle?
No, sir. That's efficient.
All right. Then to the board.
Move for approval of Resolution 18-14.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right. To our secretary for the vote.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Beeler?
Aye.
Ms. Bling?
Yes.
And Chairman Norbell?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next resolution regards the agreement with Granite School District, so to the board.
I move that we approve Resolution 18-15 with Granite School District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? To our secretary for the vote.
Ms. Bling?
Yes.
Mr. Beeler?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
And Chairman Norbell?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next resolution is our agreement with Granger Hunter Improvement District. This is Resolution 18-16.
I move for approval of 18-16.
Second, the motion?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I thought there might be discussion. To the secretary for the roll call vote.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Beeler?
Aye.
Ms. Bling?
Yes.
And Chairman Norbell?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Resolution 18-17 is to approve the execution of our agreement with the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District.
Move for approval of Resolution 18-17.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? To our secretary for the roll call vote.
Ms. Bling?
Yes.
Mr. Beelers?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
And Chairman Norbell?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Resolution 18-18 is the last one. This is our agreement with Central Utah Water Conservancy District.
I move that we approve Resolution 18-18 with Central I move that we approve Resolution 18-18 with Central Utah Water Conservancy District. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then to our secretary for the vote.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Beeler?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
And Chairman Norbelt?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes the business of the Redevelopment Agency Board. One final motion.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear, I heard everyone say aye, so by majority, we are adjourned.
With that, then, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. And yes, we're used to people leaving in the middle, so don't feel bad at all. That happens all the time. We note that we have four members of the council here. Council members Christensen, Fitisimano, and Hilk are excused. We do have a quorum, and so with that, we've had our opening ceremony. I noted, I think we have maybe some scouts here? Traditionally, what we do is to invite someone from one of the boys to come up and tell us three things. If they can remember these, I'll prompt them. What your troop number is, what you're working on tonight, and what school you go to, just a general area. We don't need your names or anything. Anyone want to come up?
Yeah.
But if not, while you're thinking about that, is there another one right up here in front?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's easier with the whole Fairborn Development.
Oh, okay. Still thinking about it?
We've got two shy ones.
Okay. Well, that's fine. Let's see, in that case, is it okay if we have the leader come up and just introduce him? Or if you would just, just come tell us what troop you are and where you're from, what part of the city?
I wonder if I'm going to.
Oh, he's shy too.
I'm just the assistant scout man. All right. And we are with the Troop 1304 on the Hunter area. They're working on the citizenship and community merit badge tonight.
Okay, great.
What was the third question? Was that it?
Your, thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay. With that, then, seeing no other scouts or anything, why, back to the council, we have the minutes of December 4th. We need a motion on the minutes.
I move for approval of the December 4th 2018 minutes.
Second.
And a second. Seeing no discussion, and all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It passes unanimously, the minutes are approved. Next, we go to our public comment period. Our public comment period, looks like we have some who've been here before, and maybe some new ones, I don't know. Maximum of five minutes, all comments addressed to the mayor. It's not a debate, a question and answer period, it's five minutes or less for you to state what you want to on any issue that you would like. And the reason why we don't answer questions or get into a discussion, it is against state law for us to discuss policy that is not on our agenda in order to protect the citizens, that we might do something, or take action, or discuss something without their being aware of it. We may respond very briefly, in general terms, but no discussions on that.
Oh, yes.
And then there is a public hearing. If you're here on the one for CAPCO 5600, that property at 2514 South 5600 West, we'll do that separately. This one, the first one, is any topic you want. With that, Jim Visok.
Good evening, Mayor, again. Once again, I'm here to ask you to put the pet ordinance on the official docket. I am aware, next week, it is on your study meeting docket officially, but since I can't do public address to that meeting, I'm going to use my time to talk about it tonight and then be here tomorrow, or next week to listen to you guys talk about it. On the pet ordinance, I'm all for the four domestic pet ordinance, as I've said many times. Where I'd like to see the change is the definition where you can only have the two cats, two dogs. What I'd like to see is it be four domestic pets, four small, four cats, or four small dogs. I know you, under Utah state law, you can discriminate against breeds, but you can designate small dogs, or like apartment complex, realtors and stuff, put a weight limit on those small dogs in your definition, might be something to consider. I know in your previous talk in one of the study meetings, you put it out to staff about possibly adapting Taylor's bills, similar ordinance, or seeing how that would fit to our city. Just a note from talking with staff at the shelter and others, there's been more hoarding cases found in Taylor'sville than there, than anywhere else. Their ordinance, if you look at it, there's a lot of open-ended stuff in it, and as the ordinance, I don't think we should go that way. Once again, I think just some tweaks to our current ordinance would be the easier fix, but once again, that's my opinion. Numbers in the shelter today, there's well over 110 cats, they wouldn't give me the exact number, and about 55 dogs. Some went to the main society, but it's still a lot of animals in our shelter. I also believe in the ordinance, you guys should talk about that, along with the shots and licensing, which we already have, is spay, neuter, and microchipping. So when an animal is left behind or picked up, we'll know who the owners are. The shelters will know. Why, when I say we, the city, will know who the owner is and be able to get the pets back to the proper people. It's sad that when you go into the shelter and see these cats that are two, three-plus years old, you know that they were somebody's pet at one time. And it's sad to see them sitting in there. I believe, and others believe, that the citizens of West Valley City would adopt more animals, as they do in other areas, if they could, you know, if they could have four cats, or four small dogs. I know there's some resistance on the dog side about the, the big dogs, and I kind of agree, but once again, it can be prejudiced to a breed of dog, but we can, or you guys can, I say we, you guys can, Mayor, limit by weight, or a suggestion. I'd also like to thank Mayor and the others for the wisdom of having a no-kill shelter. I haven't done that in the past. It is a great thing to have, to know that these animals are eventually going to find a home, whether it's through domain society, or friends with cats, or, you know, all the other entities that are out there that do take some of the pets and some of the overload of it, so I did want to do that. That's it on the cats. The other thing I want to bring up is the street parking with the snow. We got another storm coming. I know we got the new traffic division coming in, or not traffic, ticketing, parking enforcement division coming in in January, but, you know, we're going to have lots of issues, and the officers are going to get calls tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, about cars parked down the street and the plows can't get through. I know it's not the plow's driver's fault that they can't get through, but we need to get some enforcement on that, because it is really unsafe for the citizens to get around when the streets aren't plowed. And, you know, the safety of all is more important than the selfishness of a few. And I'll leave with that.
Thank you. Next, we have Eileen Peterson Davis.
I think this is the second time I've been in this office. I was here before West Valley, was West Valley, Salt Lake City. Had been here for 52 years, and I've only had a couple of citations from the city. And right now, I received my first citation a couple of weeks ago, and I called and left a message to one of the code officers, asking for more time, and for some reason, he didn't call me back. Next thing I know, I had the second citation, which I must meet by December the 23rd. So instead of Christmas shopping, decorating, wrapping gifts, I am out meeting the ordinances by December the 23rd. I am asking that that deadline be moved back until Christmas is over. We all have to do that, every year. Right now, it's kind of tough to meet that deadline. So that's the main thing I'm asking, and I want to be in harmony with West Valley, and I want to comply. I just, I need more time. And pretty much, that's all I have to say, other than I appreciate your time, I appreciate being here, I appreciate the rules and regulations, even though sometimes they're tough, because we need them to be in harmony. So basically, that's all I have to say, except Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Oh, would they immediately possibly push the deadline up in January? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Theron A. Pollard.
I am Theron A. Pollard. My West Valley address is 3339 South Redwood Road, and, Your Honor, I see behind you the plaque that says, "Unity, Pride, and Progress," which is very important in wherever you live. And I've been a business owner here in West Valley for over 50 years, including a store that I still currently operate over on Redwood Road. I think, feel that the council needs to consider the current policies for code enforcement to be looked at, because someone who's been accumulating merchandise and things for over 50 years on their property surely shouldn't have to remove them as fast as someone who may just move here a month or two ago. And that was my concern about the code enforcement at this time. And I do appreciate the opportunity to address the council, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Was there anyone else who came to speak tonight? Mr. Powell, any comments?
Yes, sir, just one for, for hopefully moving things along. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch the lady's name when she spoke.
Peterson Davis.
Mrs. Davis. I'll have Mr. Morris, who's the code enforcement director of that department, get with you right after the meeting to sort out what happened with the contact, and I'm sure they'd be able to get more time for her, for her issue. And then, for the other gentleman whose first name I remember, Theron, but I've already forgotten his last name, Pollard. I know we have been making extra and important efforts out on Redwood Road, and we also have been doing that and assigning that through an officer with the Community and Economic Development Department, that's to facilitate that work, both accomplish getting these properties cleaned up, but also working with the business owner at the same time. So I will make sure that we check out what the status is of that property and see what needs to happen there, and further investigate that one.
Okay. To the council, any comments? Seeing none, then we're going to move right along on our agenda. Next on our agenda, item 7A is our public hearing for application Z-13-2018 and ordinance 18-45. This is the CAPCO 5600. It was filed by them. This is to change from a manufacturing zone to a general commercial zone, or from Zone M to C2. This is for property at 2514 South 5600 West. There's an existing building there, and this is compatible with the area, the change that is being proposed, and this will give some flexibility to them for being able to lease out that building, or dispose of it whichever way they want. Pretty straightforward, since the building's already there, doesn't change a whole lot, this particular part of it, although we'll address some other issues next week. With that introduction, then, we will open it to the public for any comments. Anyone here to speak to this? Come forward, your name and address, and, and that's so that if we need to, we can contact you.
I'm Bob Firstenoff. I live at 7579 Mary Esther Circle, Cottonwood Heights. I'm the owner of the property. The building that's there has been there for three years, it's existing and it's empty. We've been unable to market the project because of the retail overlay and the no-left-turn restriction put on the property by UDOT. We have it under contract to a dentist, after which time we learned that there became a restriction in an M-zone, that you could no longer have dental in an M-zone. So we're requesting C2 so that we can sell this building to a dentist, which I believe is very compatible with that frontage usage. So unless there's questions, I'll sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll close the public comment portion and bring it back to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of ordinance 18-45.
Second. Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Beeler?
Aye.
Councilman Norbelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we go to item eight, ordinances. We have ordinance 18-46, and this is the follow-up on the meeting we had earlier. This is to designate the Fairborn Community Reinvestment Area Project Area, or Project Area Plan as the official plan of that project area. And so, according to, as required by statute, Utah Code Title 17C, Chapter 5, the project area plan is to be submitted to the city council for approval. So given what has transpired there and the actions that they've taken, it will now come to us. So it is now before the council with that introduction.
We're not bound by action of the RNAE.
Nope.
I move for approval of Resolution 18-46.
Second.
Properly before us, any further comments? Okay, then to our city recorder.
Councilman Norbelt?
Yes.
Councilman Beeler?
Aye.
Councilman Lang?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to resolutions. Item nine on our agenda, we'll begin with Resolution 18-230. This is to execute an interlocal agreement with Redevelopment Agency of West Valley City for the payment of tax increment within the Fairborn Community Reinvestment Area. And again, it's not required, but kind of part of that process, since the earlier one was approved, we'll see what happens on this one. And by the way, if it's not unanimous, it doesn't matter, since there's only four of us, it has to be majority. To the council.
I would move for approval of Resolution 18-230.
Second.
Properly before us- Property before us, seeing no further comments. It's easier to see if there's only four of you, so. To our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Beeler?
Aye.
Councilman Ortwell?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 18-231. This is requesting approval for entering into a master tax exempt lease purchase agreement with US Bancorp, government leasing. This is for the purpose of leasing, or excuse me, for the purchase of some equipment, computers, for the police department. This is a fairly routine one. We do some of these every year. This particular one is for our $155,697. That's the amount of the lease. This is the way we will obtain funds for this particular purchase. And then if this is approved, then we will actually approve the purchase of the computers once we have the funding set in place. This is traditionally the way we handle these, with that introduction to this particular resolution to the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 18-231.
Second. Property before us, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Ortwell?
Yes.
Councilman Beeler?
Aye.
Councilman Lang?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to Resolution 232, 18-232. This one, actually, the amount shown is $144,396. The difference between it and the master lease agreement, of course, is when you lease, there are financial costs. But it's a good cash flow way of handling it. So these will be purchased for our police department. They're leased for four years, at which point they'll belong to the city. And this is all done by bid, so very appropriate. With that introduction to the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 18-232.
Second. Property before us, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Beeler?
Aye.
Councilman Ortwell?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 18-233. This is to approve a cooperative agreement between our city and UDOT, the Utah Department of Transportation, for construction of the Mountain View Corridor between 4100 South and the SR 201, which is approximately 2100 South. That particular agreement, this is the way it is handled, working with the city. And of course, there are a number of things going on in conjunction with that that will be handled and are handled by separate resolution and work as far as some of the utilities, storm drains, landscaping, et cetera. And this one conveys certain portions of that right-of-way to the city, detention basins, those sorts of things that will be used for recreation. And then as well, they're going to put in a trail over, and these are on bridges, and those, over a number of portions of that trail, they're not exits and exits, but they are bridges. And so once those are built, West Valley City takes over the maintenance of those, utilizing those for our citizens and, of course, many people in the valley. So various parts of that in this agreement. With that kind of general introduction then, to the council.
I move for approval of Resolution 18-233.
Second.
Property before us, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Beeler?
Aye.
Councilman Ortwell?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have Resolution 18-234. This is to approve a professional services agreement, a contract between the city and Meridian Engineering. And this is for design services related to burying the power line along 3500 South. I know some of that work is being done. I believe there's a shared cost here between ourselves and Rocky Mountain Power. That's not a big, you still want to say Utah power might just not. And so it's advantageous to us to do that now, while this is all being done, the work that is being done along 3500 South. And so we'll do that where the corridor crosses that. It seems like, you know, it saves us money in the long run to do it at this time. And let's see, I did probably opt to, oh, something here. Sometimes my computer doesn't respond quickly. $33,210. With that introduction then to the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 18-234.
Second. Property before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Ortwell?
Yes.
Councilman Beeler?
Aye.
Councilman Lang?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have Resolution 18-235. This is authorizing the city to enter into a right-of-way contract and accept three warranty deeds with and from Magna Water District. This is for property at 620, 6150, and 6210 West on Parkway Boulevard, 2700 South. Work that will be done here in conjunction with the road that is being placed there. And since Magna Water Company is the owner of property, we do need some additional width on our road. And so this will authorize the city to proceed with that. With that introduction, to the council.
I move for approval of Resolution 18-235.
Second. Property before us, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Beeler?
Aye.
Councilman Ortwell?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Well, that completes our regular council meeting agenda, and we appreciate the two who stayed here for the whole thing. As you can see, it empties out quickly. And so with that, any further comments from the council? Just a forewarning, obviously, we'll have council meeting next week, but the following Tuesday on Christmas, we are not going to hold council meeting, nor on New Year's. Just happens this year, those are both falling on a Tuesday. So with that, one final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. We're adjourned. Thank you for coming.